And we're ready whenever you are.
Good evening, and thank you for attending the city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the cameras in the council chambers are set up to show those attending. The platform we are using is the maple leaf. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click the button, your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the panel lead. That time, can you bring your feet off?
Thank you.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scully.
Here.
Counselor Dilaba.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Powers.
Here.
Counselor Riche.
Here.
Counselor Scamperey.
He will be 15 minutes, two minutes.
Quorum present.
We have two presentations tonight, and we will begin with the Augsburg Garden Club.
I'm Lynn Griffin. I'm currently the president of the garden club. Thank you for allowing us to come to the city council meeting tonight to present the Augsburg Garden Club Maple Leaf Awards for 2022. The club has been presenting these awards since 1993, almost 30 years. We have presented the awards in a number of different ways and in a variety of venues, including city council meetings some years back. We are pleased to be doing this here again. Typically, we present awards for gardens in three categories: business or commercial, civic and residential, plus a good neighbor award. This year, we have stepped away from that model and decided to look for lovely gardens or floral displays wherever we could find them. And before I turn this over to Luanne Herzog, the Maple Leaf Committee Chair this year, I want to say thank you to all of those who make our garden club projects possible. First, to the city council mayor and city manager for their financial support over the years. We could not offer our summertime hanging baskets on Ford and State Streets without the help of the DPW, whose employees hang them, water and maintain them, and then take them down again for us in the fall. United Helpers provides the water source for us at the arterial garden. OCS students actually plant the hanging baskets for us, and we think they do a wonderful job. River View Correctional Facility accepts seeds and soil from us and grows all the plants we put in our four major gardens: the arterial garden out by the former United Helpers Riverledge, the Agrewall Garden on the St. Lawrence next to the Dubisky Center, Library Park Gardens, including the gazebo, and Kids Place Gardens at the Remington Museum, as well as the canoe full of flowers at the corner of State and Green Streets. Thanks also to all the volunteers who plant and weed spring and summer, and to Bobleroo who makes the awards you will see tonight. We also appreciate the local businesses whose services we use, such as Never Tire Farm, QT Laser, Bob's Landscaping, and formerly Miller's Greenhouse. And one last thank you to all the local businesses who make an effort to add a touch of summertime beauty each year, whether it is a couple planters of colorful flowers by their front doors, borders of perennials and shrubs around their properties, or hanging baskets on porches and poles. We do see them, and we want these businesses to know we appreciate their efforts. And now, it's my pleasure to introduce Luanne Herzog, who chaired the committee, who will present our awards.
Sure. I was a teacher for 30 years, so we were beginning to hear you. I'm sure. I am welcome to our presentation of the Augsburg Garden Club's Maple Leaf Award. Each year, we present awards to homeowners that we feel have a set four yards. The committee consists of myself, Fran DiCorrado, and Earl and Patty Fieldman. Anyone can nominate a yard to be considered. You can even nominate yourself if you'd like. The criteria used to judge our overall appeal, neatness, harmonious display of color, a variety of plants, and improvement in the area. We're presenting awards tonight to three categories. These are not in any order. All three yards are equally beautiful in their own way. First of all, we have 431 High Street, which is owned by Bonnie Griffith, our husband, who I just met tonight. Hi, Greg. Nice to meet you. Nice to see you here. You can tell as soon as you look at Bonnie and Rex's yard that they put their heart and soul into it. They tastefully and artistically use garden accessories, and there's a picture here of their yard. Yards, and these pictures don't do justice. You should drive by these yards and see them, 431 High Street. Yeah, it's a nice little evening yard, and you can see it for yourself in person how beautiful it is. The committee was very, very impressed by the way that she tastefully and artistically used garden accessories to enhance her property. And we were also very impressed with the yellow bike. It's just beautiful, and it's something that anyone can do. And you know, it's a good way to recycle a old bicycle, and you have it overflowing with flowers in the summertime. Thank you, Bonnie Griffith, for your efforts in making Augsburg a more beautiful place to live. And if you come up here, I will present you with your plaque. This can be put on a stick and displayed in your, like, in a pot of plants in your yard, or I put a hook on the back and have it hanging on the porch. So either way, congratulations. Okay, next we have 2001 Green Street, whose resident is Louis Branner. Louis's wife Holly started the garden. Louis is now its caretaker. Holly would be so proud of you, Louis, because you've done a wonderful, wonderful job. The yard is meticulously maintained, and this is Louis's yard. You can see, it's just beautiful. The yard's meticulous that we maintain the variety of colorful plants. We were blown away by the beautiful fountain that he filled with plants. It's just, in person, it really is awesome. It's like, wow. It's so impressive. Keep up the good work, Louis. We all know how difficult but rewarding it is to maintain a yard by yourself, and yours is definitely a set top. That's worth it. Well, thank you. Finally, we have 515 My Brother, whose residence is Bruce Love. Bruce's yard is immaculate. It's immaculate. The deep red geraniums and the fun, and he adds the green color of the house. If you have to go a little further, look a little more closely, we truly appreciate the beauty and love. If you go to the side of the house, you'll see a wonderful shade yard, and this is Bruce's. It's so carefully maintained. The choice of hydrangeas in the back is inspired. Multiple seating there, and it's like you sit and relax and enjoy its beauty when you're not fully needs, I'm sure, Bruce. We were all impressed by the European feel of the house and the yard. Is that what you were going for? A European feel? Thank you, Bruce, for your contributions to the beauty of Augsburg. For me. And our next award is the Good Maple Leaf. This year's recipient is Paul Pirate. Paul not only maintains a beautiful home and yard with his lovely bride Donna, but also plants and maintains the else of property. Paul has been the muscle for the garden club for many years. Rather than being so much easier than heavy lifting, Paul comes to our rescue. I don't think Paul has ever said no to anyone to need his help, and he does this in an unsuiting way that expects no credit for it. We do appreciate you, Paul. And why can you know it? By the way, this, you could try and add that the garden club does not only have women, men are allowed to join. And we would really like it if some of you men would join the garden club and do some heavy lifting for us and give Paul a break. If you have any interest in gardening and have strong hands, you're more than welcome, and we have fabulous lunches, so think about it. Okay, but back to Paul. Congratulations, Paul, and thank you for everything you do for the garden club and for the city of Augsburg. Thank you very much, and I'm, the presentations are all finished, and the mayor would like to have the residents have a picture with the city council.
Go around to the front. That's what we normally do in the past, usually.
I have one, just one quick statement. Our garden club award we gave is all set. They weren't sure how you nominated somebody. And the way to do that is, watch for it in the newspaper, it'll be out every year, and you can invite the public to make nominations. Two, you can go to the garden club Facebook page, get the information you need, whatever it is, it's on the YouTube page. We have a mailbox at the level of the library, so you can stop by the library, you can put a piece of paper to test, put his name and address on it, and we'll keep it in libraries. We hope to get many more nominations next year.
Well, thank you for everything.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care. And our next presentation will be done by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
Good evening, mayor and council. So this evening, I just wanted to give you all a brief overview and update on upcoming grant applications. On your agenda this evening, there are resolutions for four grant applications that would be submitted if approved through the New York State Consolidated Funding Application Process. Those grants are due Friday, July 29th, at 4:00 PM. And those grants include an application through the EFC Green Innovation Grant Program. This is a program designed to address stormwater infrastructure. We have identified the downtown mall parking area as the location for this project. The program allows for applications up to $3 million and provides up to 90% of project costs. It includes the engineering, planning, and funding for implementation. So we would be looking at implementing rain gardens, bioretention areas to reduce stormwater that is currently directed from the parking lot directly into the St. Lawrence River. So we're looking to reduce storm outflows from the parking lot, thereby reducing contaminants and beautifying the parking area downtown. The second application is also through EFC. This is through their Engineering Planning Grant Program for an inflow and infiltration, or I&amp;I, report. This is a maximum of $100,000 grant request. It requires a 10% match as well. Our match portion would be equal to $20,000. This is something that has been identified as a need for the city. We did apply back in 2019, but we weren't awarded. And then in 2020, the funding wasn't available, so we're coming back to this as a project need in conjunction with the work we're doing at our wastewater treatment facility through our capital project there. This is dealing with our distribution system, so the actual infrastructure under the streets, and not the actual treatment plan itself. The third grant is through New York Office, New York State Parks and Historic Preservation. We applied last year for funding for the pavilion at Riverside Avenue, but we were not awarded funding, so we've advanced the planning on that a little bit further. And we are going to, we're asking to resubmit that application as updated to provide up to $500,000 towards the implementation of a pavilion in the downtown Morsete Park area. And then the fourth and final CFA application that the city is proposing is through the Water Quality Improvement Program, the WQIP, for improvements to the Main Street pump station. Again, this is an application that we submitted for last year, but wasn't, we were not awarded. We'd be applying for $720,000 towards the $1.8 million project, of which we now have a commitment from NBRC, which is a federal funding source that can be combined with the state funds. So collectively, if awarded, the city's contribution and required match would be equivalent to $80,000 versus $800,000. So those are the four CFA applications that you have resolutions for this evening, totaling $4,320,000 on a required match of $633,000 and change. We are also looking at three grants that are up and coming. They are not part of the CFA, but they are through New York State. Those were just announced, some as early as Friday afternoon this past week. Those are the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund to address the need to assess copper and lead water services throughout the municipality. That is a grant that is due at the end of August, August 31st. EFC also has the WIA grants, which are Water Infrastructure Improvement Grants. We are looking at that program for improvements that we need to make at our water intake and water filtration system. And then also Restore New York was announced on Friday, and the deadline for that has been made today. Announced today, that deadline is October 11th. That is, that provides funding for demolition as well as rehabilitation. So one project that we had been thinking about possibly using is the demolition of 30 Main Street, although I think we're going to talk a little bit more about that later in the evening. It may, the timing may not be ideal for that, but we're still looking at other projects that might complement that demolition and potential rehab. So all seven are great sources, and we look forward to submitting these applications on behalf of the city. I'd be happy to answer any questions unless you all want to discuss them and have questions associated with the resolution.
It'd be great, you know, we get, you know, some of them to move these things forward for the city.
What was the match for the $500,000 pavilion?
It's a minimum, we are eligible for up to 75%, but the maximum amount is $500,000. And we have an engineer's estimate that the pavilion itself would be approximately $700,000, so our match would be 28% at $200,000.
It'd be a great benefit to Morsete Park, you know, for gatherings. Anyone else?
No, thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any proclamations this evening. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so this brings us to personal appearance. At this time, anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium. You have five minutes.
I just have one question. If we have to disclose our locations if we're attending remotely, does the city manager or no?
It's my understanding he does not because he does not vote.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I just had a question. Thank you.
So, anyone attending remotely would like to address council? Use the raise hand feature. You have five minutes. You wanted to come down, Ken? I went too fast, sorry. No, please.
My name is Kenneth Gardner. I live at 119 Elizabeth Street. I'm here on behalf of the Augsburg Rescue Squad. Good evening, councilors, Mr. City Manager, the hardest working people in the city, the city clerks. I am here this evening to address city council in a way suggested by the city manager. First and foremost, I would like to thank city council for approving us for the second pavement of the five zol defibrillators in this year budget, and to the city manager who offered the initial assistance. However, in my opinion, thereon the entire situation has become an unprofessional circus. First, I sent the annual report to Mr. Jelly back in June, back in January. Let me start again. Back in late February, and I wonder, have city councilors ever received that? I have no idea. I then requested to do our annual presentation before council, which is required by our agreement, and I have been denied the opportunity ever since. I'm confused as to why. This is usually a very quick presentation to go over the annual report, which council would have already received, read, before I arrived. Presentation would then end with a few, if any, questions for council, and the whole process usually takes less than five minutes, as you know. Second, in April, I made a request on how to go about requesting the check for the amount council approved in the budget. I was advised by city manager that I will have Angela Gray send a check over right away. Can you advise how many defibrillators were purchased and are all in service? I immediately responded with, we purchased five. Currently, one is waiting on a new ambulance, for those that have seen the news, understand why, to be put in. However, all five have been used both in the field and in training. Then on April 14th, Mr. Jelly responds, I have the check for OVRS. I would like the financial information that I requested delivered when you picked the check. I responded with, I have an idea. Why don't you put me on the agenda for the April 25th city council meeting, as per the agreement, and I will present the financials to all city councilors and you in public, and give me the check there, and we can all walk away happy. Instead, I get a response, the city comptroller and myself will review the OVRS annual report and OVRS 2021 financials prior to the presentation to city council, so we are prepared to render our opinion a recommendation. Please provide the financials as requested. I will not release the check until that request is fulfilled. With all due respect, when did we ever ask the city managers or city comptrollers opinions and recommendations? Then suddenly, last Friday, I received the call that the check is ready. Feel free to stop by and pick it up. So what suddenly changed? The city manager did not receive the financials from us before he released the check. We certainly have not received the city manager or city comptroller's recommendations or opinions either, and OVRS continues to provide excellent emergency medical service. After much back and forth and even freeing an Information Act request from the city manager for information not only about our financials, but information about our volunteers, paid staff, and other information he knows he is not entitled to, and which we certainly and have correctly denied, we find ourselves here. This whole situation is extremely strange to me. The Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad has provided advanced life support ambulance service to the city of Augsburg and the surrounding communities for 62 years now. I have been in EMS for 37 years now, which means I'm getting old, and been privileged to be chief at the Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad for almost 15 years now. And not once have we ever had a problem in working with the city of Augsburg until now. To be honest, I really don't understand any of this. To be clear, in fact, very clear, none of this has affected our relationship with the Augsburg Fire Department and their first responders. We continue to work great together, and I've said many times in public, the citizens of this city have one of the best EMS systems anywhere in New York State. However, still to this day, I have not been allowed to give our presentation that we are obligated to do so by our agreement, but instead, I was advised by city manager's office that I'd come address council for five minutes during the public comment section of this meeting. So here I am. So here I stand, even though this is not the presentation portion of the city council meeting, I will hold up my promise and provide to all councilors and city manager our financials that I promised to bring. I have also included our annual report in case you never received it. Someday, hopefully, someone can explain all this to me, because I certainly don't understand why this started and what the whole idea of the animosity was supposed to accomplish. On behalf of the Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad's board directors, volunteers, employees, and myself, we take pride in what we do. It is our honor to continue to serve the citizens in the city of Augsburg every day with the highest level of emergency medical services and professionals. I thank you for your time this evening, and I will leave these papers with Kathy. These are the year-end reports for 2021 and all of our financials, and I have enough for every single one of you, including the council and the city council. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ken.
Was there anyone remotely?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Maureen Fitzgerald-Breshaw. The first thing I want to discuss is our First Amendment rights. And recently, the mayor has changed his pub- Yes, I will. Yes, I will. Recently, the mayor of our city changed his page to private so that we cannot do anything and discuss. I'm not sitting down. Secondly, secondly.
Kathy, would you ask the city manager-
My foils that I have requested numerous times, they are not being answered. They keep being pushed off. Kathy, is your workload that much that you cannot send me the reports that I have requested?
Mayor, go ahead. I can-
Answer you. I'm sorry. What's that?
You don't speak directly to anyone. You speak to council, and you don't speak directly about me.
What?
Either you go ahead, do it properly-
Just refer to it as a certain individual. That way, you're not addressing anyone- A certain individual on this council has changed his Facebook page to private. He is an elected official, and that is illegal. And I want to know why council stands behind an illegal activity like that. Anybody want to answer that?
I don't.
Thank you.
Neither.
Because it's illegal?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Yes, we did, and he lost, actually. Oh, now it's not Q and A now? Secondly. That's okay. We'll change the subject. I'll move on. I'll move on. So the foils. I have requested seven foils since, let me see, April- So the foils, I have requested seven foils since, uh, let me see, April, and that was after a back and forth emails with a certain person that is the city manager and he did not answer the question, so then I had to foil. So now these foils have been pushed off to August and I want to know why. I want to know what you're hiding, Mr. Jelly.
You're, you're out of order, you're out of order. Sit down or be removed.
What is he hiding? What is he hiding? Why can't he answer my foils? It's a direct question on city finances that is not being answered. You can shake your head all you want.
Do a problem.
I'm waiting for an answer. Foil is here for a reason and this system is being abused by this city manager and you all know it. All right, no answer. That's what I thought.
Is there anyone remotely?
I do not see any hands raised.
And this brings us to correspondence, do we have any?
We do not.
Next, uh, we have our consent agenda, that the claims is enumerated in general fund warrant, number twelve dash twenty twenty-two, the amount of five hundred seventy-seven thousand, six hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. Library warrant, number twelve dash twenty twenty-two, the amount of zero dollars. And capital fund warrant, number twelve dash twenty twenty-two, the amount of zero dollars. And community development fund warrant, number twelve dash twenty twenty-two, the amount of one thousand four hundred seventy dollars and eighty cents. And community renewal fund warrant, number twelve dash twenty twenty-two, the amount of zero dollars, as audited, be in the same hereby, our order paid, I so moved. I'll say that. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperey? Approved.
We do not have any appointments tonight. Our first item of business will be read by Director of Public Works, Chain Brown.
A resolution to approve a shared services agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation, providing shared services in response to emergencies that affect all transportation systems in the city of Augsburg.
I want to do that. I'll say that. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Hey, uh, no discussion, I, I just have a couple of questions. Do, have we had one with them before, is this a renewal?
Yes, I believe so, I think they, about, you can either have them every three or every five years.
I thought it was every two or every four.
Yes, you're correct, Mr. Reish, it was two or four.
So this is also one of two that you'll see, council, this is the one to cover emergencies, there's a second one that'll be coming that will be for more routine services, borrowing equipment, sharing things back and forth, this is strictly to cover all the parties in the event of emergencies.
Are we okay doing it for four years versus two years?
I, I don't see any reason on not to, this one, again, Counselor Reish is for, is for emergencies only, it's got a cap of twenty-five thousand in either direction on it, um, it just saves us renewing the paperwork over and over again, it's a good, good, uh, agreement to have in place for, again, for crisis.
Okay.
We're ready, Kathy, call the roll, please.
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperey?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution calling for a public hearing and public notice on a proposed ordinance amending chapter one eighty-nine of the Augsburg Municipal Code entitled Streets and Sidewalks, chapter one eighty-nine, section nine, sidewalk maintenance. The public hearing would be held on July twenty-fifth at six P M. here in council chambers.
I'll move that. I'll say that. Any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Scamperey?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher? Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be again read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
A resolution calling for a public hearing and public notice on a proposed ordinance amending chapter eighty-three of the Augsburg Municipal Code entitled Brush, Grass and Weeds, chapter eighty-three, section three, failure to comply, work by city.
Oh, John, would you please mute again?
Uh, again, this public hearing would be held on the twenty-fifth day of July, uh, at six P M. here in council chambers.
I'll move that. I'll say that.
Just wondering, what's the, what's the changes? I'm not sure. Want this is to cut your grass, right? Keep your grass cut, use vegetation, you already have this code.
So you were provided with the current language as well as the highlighted portions, which are changes. In chapter eighty-three, it's assigning, it's making clear who is responsible for, um, identifying and confirming the violation, which is the code enforcement office, that is the current practice, but this codifies it, so that's chapter eighty-three.
Okay.
Um, chapter one eighty-nine is essentially codifying the very same fines and violations that we have in, uh, brush and weeds for sidewalk clearing for winter snow removal. So the fines will be matching.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher? Counselor Kennedy? Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperey?
Yes.
Approved.
Next, I, I will make a motion to go to executive session to discuss medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person, corporation, or matters leading to an appointment. Do I have a second? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy? Is this in the same executive session we have scheduled for the end, is this in place of it or is this something separate?
Okay, yes.
Counselor Powers?
John, could you mute it again?
I'm sorry, Counselor Powers, I didn't hear your vote.
Yeah, is this something that, that's going to be voted on here shortly? Due to a resolution that's on, on the docket here?
Yes. Yes, there's action immediately following that. It's to discuss the next item on, uh, for council action.
Yes.
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperey?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Approved.
Counselor Reish and Counselor Powers and Mr. Jelly, please note that the meeting will stay live. Mr. Jelly, I'll call you, someone will have to call Counselor Reish and Counselor Powers, but your feed will remain live, so if you do not leave the room where you plan to attend the executive session, your transmissions will go through.
It's just.
It's just.
I bet this is a great.
Yeah.
I like the.
You know, right? All right. I have one question. Oh, okay. She gets rid. Yeah. Oh, no. Yeah.
It's all.
Do you want to come and see? I'll see. Two. So. See now. It's, it's. I get it.
It's just.
Okay. Come on down. I really appreciate it. It's a nice. Sorry. I'm sorry.
How you doing?
Just. It is. I'll be.
She's aware of it. That's.
Really. It's kind of. They blow it up. I kind of feel so. These. If. Yes. So.
It's.
Oh.
It's.
It's all. You. Well, we do. It's. This can be heard. It's. Sure. It's. Like you're. Starting this way. I think. I need. It's. Yeah. Very good. Um. Thank you. For all these reasons. All right. I feel so. Oh. Thank you. The. Awesome. You know. Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna talk. Thank you. Wow. We got. Um. Yeah. 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 First day. I'm. And. Why we want to change? She. Sorry. She. She. We found. She didn't. I should have. They both. Yeah. She. She. It's. Yeah. You're. So. She. She. I'm alive. Okay.
Sorry, Chief. Thank you. I'm gonna get up. Up yourself. [laughing]
She. One of her.
It's. First. Just have to. We don't. Thanks. We.
She.
Cause. She. It was. And. It's. Definitely. For the. And then I. Walk.
Well.
You. Oh, the point.
Yeah.
All the same.
Yes. Yes. She. I'm very. There's. One. It's.
Yes.
If you get in there, can you get out? Okay. No, I'm just saying. Pretty tight back there. Well, there's no cars back there. Never mind. I'm thinking about during the day. But, okay. Yeah. The mayor.
Yeah. Right for you.
Um. There's. Sorry.
Starting. Yeah. What is?
I love her. This. Wait.
And. It's.
Oh, you. I just said. Doesn't. Well, it's. Change. Yeah. Um. Yeah.
Yeah. It's. It's. Oh.
No. Oh, no.
Yes, sir. So. You have two. And.
We're. Smart.
There's. Yeah.
Okay. That's just. Sorry. I would. Your cell is. Yeah. And.
Yeah.
It's.
That's. I would. It's.
Thanks. Trying to get a little dangerous. See that? The. You some. A little wild.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, you see. There's. It's. Good.
That'd be.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh. Yeah.
So. Yeah. Okay. It was. It's. Yeah.
Oh.
On this.
Oh, yeah.
It's. What is?
What is? Maybe. To be. It's.
She.
Yes.
I think.
Oh, my. Oh. I'm.
Yes. It's. I. Yes. So. What's your name? I'm. I think. Should be. Don't want to show.
Straight. I'm. Alright.
Yeah. Oh, God. We. Not as well. See it. We're never. Oh. No. We. Don't. Why? It's. Yes. So this. Choking sign. It's. I don't know. Maybe. That's. Probably. Oh. Oh. Shot. Shot. Stat. Stat. It's. But that. We should. Great. I'm. It's. Yeah. I. So. We.
So. Let's. So. Oh.
Yeah. Hold me back. Get another one.
It's.
Okay.
Let the record. Reflect that all members are of the council are still present. And our next business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with diversified Construction Services, Inc. For the demolition of up to seven condemned structures. Request for bids number two zero two two dash zero zero four.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
I would like to make an amendment. Um. I'd like to add an eighth structure to that, which would be thirty Main Street. Um, at a cost of a hundred ninety seven thousand dollars, which is the cheese.
You have council.
You, please.
Dan, can you move yourself, please?
All right. I'll say it again, just in case anybody couldn't hear. Um, the amendment would be to add item number eight, which would be thirty Main Street, which is also known as the cheese plant property. Um, and the cost related to that would be a hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars. And that would change in the now therefore be resolved for a sum not to exceed three hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. Do I have a second?
I'll say. Um, so. Just. We did discuss. This was put out to bid. To. Companies. And. Next highest bid was about eight hundred thousand. So. It's. What do you?
In, in the benefit. Um, of moving forward sooner rather than later is within seventy two hours of them being awarded the bid, they will start the permitting process. And that building will be down by mid September. All. All of the cheese plant property will be down by mid September. So this is. It, when this comes down, that'll be a big win. So, um, that's. I, we all agree this needed to be added on there.
New seven other.
Yep.
So this is gonna be a big, big step for our city.
Yeah. I mean, if you look at number five, one thousand Jefferson Avenue, that's the best building.
And for the benefit.
And for the benefit of the public, the bid was for a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, but doesn't include the landfill disposal cost and other items that are estimated by staff to be around a hundred thousand dollars. Is that correct?
That's correct, third-party air monitoring for the abatement of asbestos, which is six hundred and fifty dollars a day. And the actual landfill fees, which the city will bear the cost of those, we will apply, as a municipality, we are eligible to apply for reduced tipping fees, so it's less expensive than having it just hauled by the private sector. Based on the demolition costs and the approval of our most recent request to the Development Authority of the North Country for two twelve Ford Street, we anticipate that asbestos-containing material will cost forty dollars a ton and non-asbestos construction debris would cost thirty-one fifty a ton, but that has to be approved.
I mean, and if you look at item number five, one thousand Jefferson Avenue, I mean, many of us have grown up playing up at Minat Park, that is the building located all right next to Minat Park. So if that comes down, hopefully, we can host some more softball tournaments, utilize that field for our youth. And that will bring a lot of vibrancy and hopefully some sales tax revenue into the city, once we can get some of these properties cleared up.
This is a great job by staff, thank you.
And the last one on here, the seven, is the old dark side, which will open that up just wonderfully for the Hosmer's development. So, I mean, when you, once this is all gone and you turn the corner coming off the twin bridges, it's, oh, I mean, it's time. Oh, my God, I mean, that, and it opens up potential for the downtown revitalization money.
Hard to believe we've got a bid like this.
Did you want my notes on the?
I think I've got it, thank you.
And it's nice, and it's nice that we, you know, we have the fund balance to accomplish this, otherwise it wouldn't be possible.
Just clarity here, number seven has not been purchased by. I mean, this is a city-owned property that we're tearing down, that hasn't been purchased by Hosmer. Recognizing aesthetically, it would look a lot better for him when he builds his, you know, when he's partnered up for his microbrewery, I'm assuming. I don't want people to think that Lake Street is owned by, number seven is owned by Hosmer.
I didn't say that, Mike.
No, I didn't say it did.
So it's not Hosmer's, I understand that.
So, vote as amended?
Yeah.
So we have to vote two amend?
Yeah, two amend.
So this would be two amend, Mayor. Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Jilibah?
Yes.
Approved, and now as amended. Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally? Counselor Jilibah?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
And our next item will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrew Smith.
This is a resolution declaring surplus property and authorizing the city manager to hold a public auction. Whereas staff has reviewed the following properties and recommend that a city council declare as surplus city-owned property fit for public sale at the recommended minimum price. Twelve Mill Street was last auctioned on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, it's at the residential business district, we're reducing a recommended sale price of five hundred dollars. Mill Street, which does not have a nine-one-one street address, it's adjacent to Twelve Mill Street, tax map number forty-eight point zero seven eight dash five dash thirty-three. Also auctioned on the fourteenth of July, twenty twenty-one, in the residential business zoning district, recommended sale price of five hundred dollars. Eighteen through twenty Mill Street, same last auction, July, residential business, sale price of five hundred dollars. Four twenty-six Champlain Street, last auctioned July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, moderate-density residential zoning district, sale price of five hundred dollars. Two oh seven Adams Avenue, last auctioned in July twenty-one, single-family residential zoning district, sale price of five hundred dollars. Clover Hill, last auction, does not have a nine-one-one address, sorry, tax map number forty-eight point zero seven two dash eight dash thirty-four. Single-family residential sale price, this is a buildable lot, sale price of one thousand dollars. And the last property from the July twenty twenty-one auction is six eighteen Lake Street, moderate-density residential zoning district, buildable lot, sale price of thirty-five hundred dollars. Newly acquired property, nine thirty-five State Street, this property is condemned due to structural damage on the roof. A certificate of occupancy is required prior to reoccupancy, it's located in the city's MDR zoning district, the recommended sale price is ten thousand five hundred dollars. Nineteen oh seven J Street, this property is also condemned, having been a former structure friar. Certificate of occupancy is required prior to reoccupancy, it's located in the city's single-family residential zoning district with a recommended sale price of ten thousand five hundred dollars. Four oh five King Street is located in the city's moderate-density residential zoning district, this property is also condemned. And the recommended sale price is eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Five twenty-nine King Street is condemned, it's been gutted entirely, it does not have any utility hookup or water sewer hookup. A certificate of occupancy is required prior to occupancy, it's located in the moderate-density residential zoning district and it does not have a driveway or access for a driveway, the sale price is ten thousand five hundred dollars. Eight oh one Washington Street is half of a duplex complex located at the corner of Washington and Hamilton Street. It was last inspected through the city's rental inspection program in twenty eighteen, it's located in the city's single-family zoning district and the recommended sale price is sixty-seven hundred dollars. Eleven twenty-seven Pickering Street is condemned, it's located in the single-family residential zoning district. It has frontage on two streets and a lane, it has a recommended sale price of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Four twenty Lafayette Street, formerly United Helpers Nursing Home property, it's just two acres located in the city's moderate-density residential zoning district, has an appraised price of forty-five thousand dollars. And lastly, nine thirty Franklin Street, this is a vacant lot, it's a non-conforming lot in the city's moderate-density residential zoning district. The city completed demolition of the former residential structure that had been a fire structure last year, the recommended sale price is six thousand five hundred dollars. Be it further resolved, the above list shall be published for sale by public auction, to be held at City Hall at two P M. on Tuesday, August second, twenty twenty-two.
I'll move that.
Do you think we should give more notice and give people more opportunity to view these properties and think about it? And, and I just wonder if August second's not, you know, I don't know when it's going to go on the paper, but it's a very short time period. And my second question is. Is there any reason why we can't do a display ad and, you know, with photos of these properties? So that, you know, we get the word out there and actually, you know, sell some of them and, and get the price that we're asking for?
So, to answer your first question, Counselor, the ad will be published, if approved, in Thursday's paper. Kathy will, has established the date, that'll go in North Country.
Okay, is that, is that just a legal notice, or is that like a display ad?
That's the legal notice, that we're required by law to post, that will go in North Country now on Thursday, to your services.
And a lot of people don't see those, that's why I'm asking about the display ad.
We will also do a press release that we do on the city's website, so anybody that signed up for notifications, we get a notification, a text message to their phone, letting them know that we have posted a press release, the list would be published in that press release. Typically, we do a public auction in this July timeframe, so we have gotten a lot of calls asking about when the city will be having a public auction of surplus property. And we made them aware that this is on the agenda and reminded them that if they are an adjacent property owner, we will be mailing them a draft notification with the details of the auction date.
I hope so. I think, personally, I think we could do a better job of providing more notice and, and, I mean, like, the county puts out an entire publication on theirs, I realize this isn't as many, but I think we could do a better job at that, I, there'd be a lot of people that just won't be aware that these properties are coming up, I'm afraid, but can see what happens.
The date of the auction can certainly be changed, this is just the earliest that it can be, in accordance with the requirements for the three consecutive weeks. So if council, and it allows us to get it on the council, any sales on the council agenda for the eighth for action and approval by the council. Your next meeting is the twenty-second, so you can do it later, or you could do it even later, so they come to you in September, that's entirely up to the council.
Yeah, I don't, I'll, I'll talk to Andrew, we'll take that in there, the, I need council to authorize me to do an auction, I'll, I'll work on the particulars of when we're and how we do it. Point made on the, on the advertising and how we do, we, we worked with the county last year to parallel theirs, I think we'll do that again this year for whatever we have left over, this is the latest list of properties we're authorizing council to put on the list, we still have many more that we've got to dispose of. So we'll, we'll, to your point, Counselor Reish, we'll, we'll stay after this and, and continue to move, move properties. We've moved a lot of properties in the last two years, so we're, you know, we're very motivated to keep, to keep, you know, so we'll, we'll work on it.
Kathy, would you please call it all?
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Jilibah?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Approved. It's a resolution to apply for twenty twenty-two Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation Funds through the New York State CFA process. The summary of this is it's a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for New York State Office and Parks, Parks and Recreation, Historic Preservation for a five hundred thousand dollar grant under the Environmental Protection Fund Grant Program for Parks Preservation and Historic Heritage.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
So this is to support the pavilion, again, the city's match would be the equivalent of twenty-eight point six percent in our cost share based on current engineer estimates of a total project of seven hundred thousand would be two hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. Kathy, would you call it all, please?
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Jilibah?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Public Works.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with John J. Doyle Builders Incorporated, bid number two zero two two dash zero zero five.
I'll second that.
It's for parts replacement of the pump house, that's collapsed.
I'm glad to see that done.
So Shane, this is the main roof, right, it's just the, the little red one there on the side?
Yes, it's the red one that first come down the hill on the side.
Right, okay, thanks.
I wanted to see the one that's better. That's all there was. Nobody else? Got a lot of interest, but they were all that bit. Really?
How bad, see, how bad a shape is it in?
It's collapsed and all the beams are rotten.
Yeah, it's just a little, it's just a little shed on the side of it. Mike, it's, it's not, the main roof was done with an historic preservation grant when I was there at the city. And that's still fairly good shape, because it was, I don't know how many year shingle it was, but it was almost like it's late, so. Yeah.
How long did we have it take? Four weeks. Really? It's not a very big job, I think that's why a lot of people jump on it. And it's prevailing wages.
Kathy, would you please call it all?
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Jilibah?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Approved. I'll, I'll read it for Shane. So, resolution authorizing the submission of a two thousand and twenty-two consolidated funding application. Whereas grants of up to one hundred thousand dollars are available to finance engineering and planning services for the production of an engineering report through New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, E F C. for Engineering Planning Grant Program. Whereas the city of Augsburg will prepare and submit an application under category two for inflow and infiltration I and I projects as a result of an order on consent or Speedy's permanent compliance schedule. And whereas, in accordance with the application requirements, all grants require a local match equal to twenty percent of the requested grant amount. And whereas the required twenty thousand dollar match will be paid for out of account G one, sorry, G eight one two zero point five one five. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council supports the submission of an engineering planning grant application seeking one hundred thousand dollars to prepare an inflow and infiltration engineering report. Be it further resolved that the Augsburg City Manager or his designee is hereby authorized to submit a New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, E F C. consolidated funding application and if received, to enter into any necessary contracts to accept and administer said grant.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
So what, what exactly is the goal of this, the hundred thousand dollars, I mean, what are we designing? And what's, is this to further the, the water treatment plant project that, I don't know, is it two or three million dollar price tag, is it something different, or?
This would create an inflow and infiltration report, which identifies where there's excess water getting into the city's distribution system that's, that we want to keep out. So it would help eliminate excess water entering into our C S O's.
Okay, okay.
Kathy, would you call it all?
Mayor Scally?
Yeah.
Counselor Jilibah?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley? Approved.
Our next item of business will again be read by Andrew Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a two thousand and twenty-two Water Quality Improvement Program Grant Application. Whereas the Main Street Pump Station is the city's largest pump station in the municipal wastewater collection system. And whereas this pump station collects wastewater from the entire western portion of the city conveying liquid waste across the Oswego River, eventually discharging it into the city's wastewater treatment plant. And whereas originally constructed in nineteen sixty-three, the critical equipment, including pumps, controls, system communications, electrical, as well as heating and ventilation and plumbing systems are well beyond their designed life. And whereas the purpose of the New York State Water Quality Improvement Grant Program is to provide funding that directly improves water quality or aquatic habitat or protects drinking water sources. Now therefore be it resolved that the Augsburg City Council hereby authorizes the filing of a twenty twenty-two consolidated funding application to secure seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars in funding to undertake rehabilitation of the Main Street Pump Station. Be it further resolved, the city manager is hereby authorized to submit that application and if awarded, to administer the program, including executing all necessary documents relating to the application or administration of the program.
No, I'm really, thank you for putting in this application. I know we, you know, this is the second one, I guess. So it would cover the majority of the cost and, you know, given the fact that we're going to have a million dollar a year payment coming up on the, the treatment plant, it's, it's good that we're using grant money to, to pay for this. Or trying to anyways.
Right. So we did apply, as I indicated earlier in the evening, that we did apply for this thing right last year and were not awarded, but at that time, we had not yet been awarded the million dollars from NBRC. So that is an advancement since last year's application process as well as the fact.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
As well as the, the city has authorized a contract with EDR to do the design. So we will be applying for essentially the, the construction part of the project, which hopefully will score more highly.
I was just going to say it's a, it's another good reason to have that meeting with the Environmental Facilities Corporation to talk about this and the, the main project.
Kathy, would you please call it all?
Counselor Dillaba.
Yes.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Reese.
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly.
Yes.
Mayor Scally.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Shane Brown.
This is a resolution authorizing submission of the 2022 Environmental Facilities Corporation Green Invasion Grant Program. Whereas a grant for up to $3 million are available to improve water quality by treating stormwater at its source direct.
I'll, I'll move that.
I'll second.
I just have a, I just have a question or I, I listened to Andrew's presentation. This is for around the mall, but I, I thought I, I thought I heard her say that the outfalls around the mall and that go into the river and not into the wastewater treatment plant.
Then it's correct, but it's, it's also just, just grants also to stop things going into the river. Run off salt, sand and stuff like that to keep that out of the river.
Yeah, I just wish we were, you know, you know, focused on, because we, I mean, we obviously have a serious problem with our outfalls and we've been cited for that, I think. So I wish it was going for that. I mean, this is, this is good too. I just wish we were more focused on that.
This is, let me jump in here a minute. So, Counselor Reese, we're expecting, we're putting all the reports together from the development authority and the engineers and we'll be briefing the issue of the stormwater infiltration to the wastewater treatment plant as part of the, the overall sewer budget presentation. So we, we have a lot of data already there, a lot of things that decisions can be, be made from, but we've got to, we've got to formulate a plan for how we're going to execute this. It's a, it's, it's not a small project. We're talking millions, millions of dollars, 20, 30 million probably, somewhere in that range. So we're trying to get all the information together to come up with a methodical approach to how we start segmenting this project and getting the best bang for the buck to get the, the, the stormwater lines separated. So this is a little different initiative. It'll go towards the same thing, but, but we are, we are focused heavily on that. And council will get an extensive report when we brief the sewer budget. And I think right now we're, I can't remember if we're doing sewer in August or sewer in September, but we're going to do that aside from the budget costs this, this year so that we're able to, to focus specifically on that enterprise and the issues that are tabled.
Good. I'm glad you're working on it. Okay. Thank you.
Kathy, would you call it all, please?
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Reese.
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly.
Yes.
Mayor Scally.
Yeah.
Counselor Dillaba.
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to old business and I believe we have an update on a couple things, Steve.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. So council, as I emailed to you today, our beach application was denied again by the Department of Health. I sent you all the information. We'll post that information on the city website tomorrow as far as the reasons why. Ultimately, just kind of in summary, there's still an issue that we need to work on and address, which is when we do have a higher than normal reading of fecal, if you will, what, what the source of that is. We, we really seem to, to clean up our, our issue, we think, with the goose and the seaweed and eroding matters around the shore. Our sampling throughout the eight week period that we're required to do it was, was, was excellent the entire time. We had that, that flash storm in May and we were required to take samples five days immediately following that storm. And that, the couple of days post that storm are when our readings went up quite a bit. They also fell rather fast. So the Department of Health wants us to root out what, what is the cause of that? Is it coming from a large storm drain that is down near the beach area that we believe contains kind of all the storm drainage from the psychiatric center area? Or is it as a result of when we have a CSO release in a, in a, in a major rain event like we had there? So we're going to be working on getting to the bottom of that. I don't see now the circumstances where we'll be able to open the beach this year. I don't think we can do the analysis that the Department of Health is looking for prior to, you know, reasonable time we could still open the beach. One of the things they, they wanted us to discuss is sampling during the period of time when the beach is open. That was sort of something new they threw at us. I, I don't think it was intended to be a curveball. I think their point just was they're wanting to be able to determine is the, what is the cause and when do we see specifically those levels go up so they can put in, you know, mitigating rules? For instance, if in fact we could tie, you know, the, the high levels to one of those sources of the other, but we could always demonstrate within a day or two, it disappears or goes away. And then our permit perhaps would say something like, you know, post a rain event, yet the beach has to be closed for 24 or 48 hours or something like that. So I don't, I don't feel like, again, all is lost. I just feel like this has been a, a pretty significant journey that we've been on. The approval process is again, very, very lengthy. So, so that, that is the current status of the beach. Sorry that it, it didn't go our way, but I think, I think we're knocking down all the issues and, and ultimately doing what, you know, is our job and the health department's job, which is make sure we're providing, you know, safe facilities for people to recreate at, which was obviously always, always our attention. And it's the Department of Health's job to, to ensure that we're doing that as it relates to water quality. That's the end of the brief. Again, I'll send that in writing. We'll post the information, including the, all the test results from our eight week testing period sometime this week pending your questions.
I just, I just have a, a question. At one time, the authority passed a resolution to sell their surplus waterfront land, which included the beach. And there's a large portion of waterfront to the west of the Bridge Administration Building. You know, given the difficulties with this, maybe we're better off approaching the authority and encouraging them to, you know, do what they said they were going to do in terms of, you know, putting that property, having an auction and putting it back on the tax rolls as an alternative to development. So that's something to think about for, for everybody.
I will, and related to the beach, would it be possible to get an update on what we spent so far and all the materials that have been purchased for the beach, safety equipment, et cetera? Is that material going to be used at the pool? Is that just going to be sitting unused? Is there a way we can do a sale of surplus items that we won't need so we're not sitting on them and taking up storage space?
Yeah, we'll issue a report, Counselor. We didn't, we didn't really buy all that much stuff and, and no, most of it wouldn't, wouldn't be used somewhere else. We bought, you know, beach buoys specific to that activity. And again, I, I don't know, we're going to put together a report and a course of action set for council to look at. It's not my recommendation right now that we abandon this effort. It's, it's, it's going to be my recommendation, I believe, you know, that we, we take a look what the Department of Health is asking for and we continue to, to run that down. I don't, again, I don't think this is a, a bad endeavor. I just think it's an endeavor that had a lot of, a lot of things that need to be done. They treated us like a new beach, which is certainly, you know, good, I think, what everybody wanted. But I, I don't, I don't think that we're out of the running to, to continue running this down. This is, this is really, at this moment, still a matter of, of identifying, you know, some sources of, of, you know, what, what is the source of contamination? So, but we'll, we'll, we'll bring it back to council. If it's something council doesn't want to continue to pursue, then they can certainly make that decision as we move forward in the 2023 budget.
Is, um, are we also still going to keep the ADA compliance moving forward as far as ideas and things like that? Are we ceasing that going forward until we have approval for the beach?
No, I don't think so. And, and I, I really think, I think the health department, again, is, is, is treating us fairly here. I just think this, we've got to work this issue down. And I think over the course of the next couple of months, for instance, I think we're going to continue sampling, looking, what is the potential source of contamination from the large discharge area there? What is our CSO event? But what is the water clarity, water purity, et cetera, throughout the swim season? That was one of the things they noted was they really would like to see sampling during the season we'd be swimming in. We were sampling in the, in the early spring, obviously wanting to get our sampling done. So we were, we were ready to go. So, so no, I, I, again, I, I, I think that, I think this is something we should continue with. I just think it's, it's, it's taking longer than, than we had hoped it would take to, you know, to, to root everything out.
Right. But that wasn't my question. My question was on ADA compliance.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I, I don't, no, I don't think we'll stop. I, I guess my point to you was if, if we can, if we can see that, that we can succeed in, in what it is they're asking for. In other words, if we can identify which is the source of contamination, is it something that can be mitigated? Then I think, again, it puts us in a strong position to be studying the ADA, you know, over the, over the winter months next year so that, so that we've got those recommendations and we can look at considering appropriating money for that during the budget. And I think we'll know in the next couple of months, can we, can we, you know, achieve what the health department's asking for or is, you know, or is it just not something that's going to be achievable? And, and I'm not trying to beat around the bush. I, I don't, I don't believe, again, I, I don't really think the, the discharge sewer, storm sewer line is our issue down there. I, I, I think this storm, we knew that we had a significant CSO release post the storm. I, I, I tend to believe that that's the cause of it, which we are mitigating daily as we get the sewer wastewater treatment plant up and running. We get the, the storage tank on. We just, we're talking tonight about eliminating CSOs. I, I think that it is much more likely that is the source. I, I don't think it's a coincidence, but, but we're going to, we're going to do some more testing this summer as rain events happen and try to pinpoint exactly where it's coming from.
I guess my point is just that we've, we kept like last year during budget time, we said we're going to run it for a year and then, you know, we'll call for assistance when needed and it won't be accessible to everyone. I'm just saying, if we're jumping through all of these hoops to have a beach, I just think that we need to be equally jumping through the same said hoops to make sure that when we open, it is equitable for everyone. That's just, that's just where I'm going with that.
Yes, ma'am. I don't, I don't think anyone disputes that. I just, that's kind of just trying to keep all the, all the things going, spend as, as little money as we can smartly without overspending.
Well, we still, if we're going to have a beach, we have to spend appropriately to make sure it's for everyone. So that's why I'm just saying, if that's not the location, then maybe we should stop beating a dead horse and try to find a better location. That would be more ADA compliant and would maybe have less hoops to jump through.
Yeah, I don't, I, I just, I don't think any such location exists, Counselor, any, any place that we've established a new beach from.
Well, then maybe a nice splash pad would look good somewhere.
No doubt.
Do you have any other updates, Steve?
Yes, sir. I'll go ahead and just a quick one on the St. Lawrence Psychiatric Center and Augsburg Correctional Facility vacant property. Council will get a briefing at the next meeting from Mr. Marshall Vitale. He's an associate director in the Office of Mental Health who's in charge of facilities. I think it's, it's good that he comes down. He's going to show up early in the afternoon. I'll send the invitation to all of council. He's willing to walk the grounds, tell everybody what his plan is going forward. He's got a pretty comprehensive one. I don't want to steal his, his thunder, but he's, he's moving forward at a, at a pretty fast clip to assess those properties out there, determine, you know, what is salvageable, what is not salvageable. His sole mission right now for the Office of Mental Health is to, is to get them out of the real estate business. So I think he's got some things to say and a plan that council ought to hear. There's a couple of things that he's going to be asking for us. So I just, I just want everybody to know, we've, we've been conversing with them. And I think, again, we'll offer everybody the opportunity to come out, walk the grounds, and then he'll come to the meeting and, and give a, a presentation in public so everybody knows kind of where they're heading right now as far as the Office of Mental Health properties go. So, and just on the side, the Augsburg Correctional Facility, we will be getting the meeting invitations now. So all of council, myself, staff will receive them. So as there's meetings to start to discuss what the committee's recommendations are going to be, we'll be, we'll be in on those. So I'll make sure everybody's getting the communication on that. And we'll, we'll look for Mr. Vitale's presentation next council meeting.
I'm sorry, Steve. Who did you say that, that was?
Marshall Vitale, V I T. Oh, I'm sorry. It'll be the 25th council. I think that's the day of the next council meeting. I think he's going to try to plan to be here about one. So we'll probably plan for a 1:30, 2 o'clock meetup on site. And again, he'll come to the meeting and, and give a presentation on the outside of the meeting.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. How did you spell his last name again?
V I T A L E.
Thank you.
And he's going to discuss the prison as well?
I know. I just think he, he will, well, to, to a certain degree, what he's going to talk about is basically a little bit of the, the freedom that he's got now because of not having to coordinate, if you will, with the Department of Corrections that they were somewhat hamstrung before. So again, I, I'll let him kind of talk, you know, where he's at. I think, I, I think the things that he's going to talk about as far as redevelopment opportunities and some of the initiatives he's using will, will be applicable also to that, to that facility. I, I suspect, I mean, again, this will get treated as, as different issues, but it, it probably shouldn't be. It's, it's all on the same grounds, the same property. And again, I'm happy now to have a, a very proactive and aggressive contact at the Office of Mental Health. And we'll, we'll see what, what ends up, you know, who ends up with a disposition responsibility for that, for the prison.
Have we had any more conference with the mayor or excuse me, the governor regarding OFC and the closure or the reuse of that facility?
No, sir. Not that I'm aware of. None, none that I'm aware of. No, sir.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any old business?
Yes. I got an email from a gentleman. He applied for the American Rescue Plan funding and hasn't heard anything yet. We have a timeline and for, for people to know one way or another, he said he applied. He needs his furnace fixed. He applied. So is, is there still people on the list or?
There, there is. You know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a big task. I, I expect we're going to be issuing some of the initial awards this week. We will be sending letters to people, letting them know if they're, if they're way down the list, you know, what their position is and what we'll be doing with their application pending additional funding. So it's a, the process of verifying income and actual need and demand and, and things like that. It's, every, every application's a little bit different and, and every one of them takes, takes a lot of time. And we're doing all this within house staff. So I suspect award notifications will be going out in the next, the next week or so. But we're also going to be following up with ones that we know are, are, are well down the list that won't, you know, won't be getting funded.
Okay, good. The whole, so we, you sent out correspondence regarding the, the Office of, what is it called? Open Government, right? And I know Ms. Brashaw brought up the comment tonight and the Stevie Stockboy thing. Are they going to get their foils addressed?
Yeah, absolutely. We, the, the city clerk's office does an excellent job of, of addressing the, the four requests. Yeah, absolutely. We, the, the City Clerk's Office does an excellent job of, of addressing uh, the, the FOI requests. Um, as, as a brief counsel on a couple of occasions, the Clerk's Office has been overwhelmed by these and uh, it's, it's not the only thing we do. And, and I'm not stopping all city operations to answer FOI requests. So City Clerk is working on them along with their department heads or staff that she needs to reach out to get information from. Uh, we're prioritizing uh, them, quite frankly, in the order that they're received. Um, you know, a lot of foils come in that are very simple uh, turnaround uh, items. Some are more complex and some require, you know, hours of staff time to do. So uh, the staff is following the, the rules uh, you know, to the T. Uh, the City Clerk is managing it uh, completely within her authority. And uh, um, any, any, any specific cases um, you know, that you wanna discuss, Counselor, I'm, I'm happy to. I'm uh, the, the, I guess we'll just call it the quote Stevie Stockboy one. I'm, I'm, at some point in time, Counselor, I have to stop allowing city systems to be mocked uh, for people's, uh, people's recreation or disruption purposes. And uh, and I'm, and I'm handling that appropriately to keep the city staff from being bogged down with those. Uh, in relation to, to um, to the individuals you mentioned, uh, she's received a lot of uh, responses to her foils and she'll continue to receive uh, those, those uh, FOI requests that are valid and required by the, the state for us to provide responses.
Okay. Uh, one more item I have. I don't, I was gonna put under new business, but I think because we basically have a contract to maintain uh, the Route sixty-eight and the twin bridges and, and things like that. Uh, I had a conversation with some businesses in the area down there uh, about cleaning up the uh, graffiti on the twin bridges, uh, especially with Seaway Festival coming up. They could be sandblasted a little bit around the cement and they're, they, they really don't like the fact that when somebody comes to visit and, and coming in by boat or car or whatever, uh, they're looking at the vulgarity there. And so based on our contract with the state in terms of maintenance and things like that, do, would we get reimbursed as well for uh, if, if we sandblast that before Seaway Festival or do something to the state? So can we put a move in to get something like that going uh, uh, before Seaway Festival to have that taken care of? It's, it's pretty pride.
Yeah, let's, let's look at it and talk to the state. Uh, we just had a good meeting with uh, the regional engineer and uh, and the local supervisor. So we've got a good line of communication open up. So let us, let us talk to them and see uh, see what we can't get accomplished.
Great, great.
I don't know if you noticed the storm drain getting fixed on State Street. Steve's worked on that since last year to get the state to fix it. Some of them are really bad.
Very good.
He's been working on that.
Excellent. Uh, and then the other thing, I didn't know if you've had a chance to contact St. Lawrence County Chamber of Commerce or or i- in collaboration maybe with our, our own Chamber of Commerce uh, to get on the schedule for, I, I noticed more communities are having these, these vendor days on the, on the streets and sidewalks of their, their main streets. Have you had a chance to talk to them yet and is, are we moving on that? Hopefully for this summer.
We, we did, Counselor, and we, we've had some discussion about it. I'll, I'll follow up. I don't believe we spoke to them yet and I don't, I don't know that we're not a little bit late for, for the summer with a lot of the things that we have going on and pending some of the potential construction, but uh, we'll, we'll, we'll report back. I, we, we haven't, but I, I, I'm, I'm sure it's pretty late to plan an event like that for the summer.
All right. That's all I got.
And new business? Items for discussion?
Just going here, and it's to follow up on Dan's thing on the Committee of Open Government. Did we receive an opinion from the Committee on Open Government related to um, um, responses? And I, and I, I see your point, Steve, uh, related to um, certain aspects of um, uh, uh, of how it comes across, but I, I don't think you have to, I, I think the opinion or the law states that, that all requests regardless of name or even anonymous has to be fulfilled.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. I, I don't disagree with any of that, uh, Counselor, at this point. I'm, it's likely to be a matter of litigation now that I'm not uh, willing to talk about it open forum. I've got reasons for my decision that the city attorney and I believe are, are bona fide. And, and again, as I said earlier, I'm not, I'm not gonna allow the city government systems to be mocked or disrupted. Uh, again, this is, this is, this, the particular uh, incident is not a, is not a, is not an anonymous, it's not bona fide. It's just, it's just an attempt to mock our system and see how far we can push things. And quite frankly, it's a, it's, it's just time we, we say enough.
Right, are there, well, I, I guess my question would be, uh, with, with that would be, are the, are the requests ridiculous in nature? I mean, are, are they actually requests related to governmental operations and/or anything related to government and, and the city? I mean, are the requests mocking in nature? Uh, you know, and, you know, if they are, I think maybe an executive session with the city attorneys in order.
Set up.
You will?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Do you want a quorum or is it understood that we all would accept that?
No, I'm certain everybody would wanna, would wanna hear it, so we'll, we'll set it up.
I didn't know, I'm, it requires four votes a lot, so I didn't know if you wanted them or?
I'll, I'll do it under my authority. I don't, I don't need the council to approve. I'll do it.
Okay, and this brings us to citizen participation. Anyone like to address counsel, come down here, two minutes.
Yes, good evening. Michael Tulley, two fourteen Hamilton Street. Just a, a request with Mr. Gardner's presentation tonight of the twenty twenty-one uh, Rescue Squad Financial Report to council and to the city clerk. Besides uh, including that report in the minutes, I would ask that that report also be separately published at the city's website. Thank you.
Hello, Maureen Fitzgerald Brashaw again. Uh, speaking of foils, um, February eighteenth, I submitted a foil for the city manager's resignation letter. I received a response on March thirty-first that there was no resignation letter on file. And I am wondering now, have we received a resignation letter since he did not get the fire chief position?
I have not received anything.
Okay, thank you.
I just had two questions. The first one, we have five months left in this administration with the, with uh, Mr. Jelly saying he's leaving at the end of the year. What is the plan by this administration moving forward to select a new city manager? Uh, you know, wh- where are you going? What's your plan? Has there been any yet? We need to get one. Well, you, you've got five months left. And it, I think it's very, very important to move this community forward in a positive direction, is to have a direction. Or do we have a direction? Is there something in the wind? Is there something uh, going on that the people don't know yet? My second question is, is uh, talking with a lot of people, uh, what's the, what's the status of our, the, the Diamond National uh, project? It's, it's very exciting. Uh, it's been kind of lull. We haven't heard anything about it, so uh, is there any chance of sometime at this meeting, one of these meetings, we can get an update as, as the taxpayers?
Yeah, I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
Pardon?
I said, I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
Okay. I hope, hope to see it some future meet. Thank you.
Me too.
Is there anyone not attending remotely?
The first individual with a raised hand is registered as Tanya Snyder, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears your line is muted. This is Snyder. It appears your line is muted. Would you like me to move on, Mayor? There are no other hands after that.
There was no one else?
No one else, sir.
So this brings us to
Mayor? Yes. The, the need for executive session uh, was uh, was sent forward through me, but is, is no longer needed.
Thank you. Uh, so I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
All favor.
All right.
All right.
Mayor, if I may. Just so everyone knows, the Fire Department will be bringing the new Pierce Quint fire truck to City Hall in a few moments for anyone who'd like to view it. Depending on parking, it may be out front or it might be in the back parking lot. She's bringing it up.
Yes, sir. I was going to make my way.